I was gonna say, and see your vehicle.
Ready? Okay. All right, I'll call the meeting to order. It is eight o'clock and we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public discussion. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda in minutes dated March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. Motion by Garmin. Need a second? I'll second. Any discussion on the agenda in minutes? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. If you want to take a minute and open up your claims, if you haven't already seen them, and entertain a motion to approve both the claims and drainage claims at any time. Okay, we have a motion by Haas. He's a second, second by Stecker. Any discussion, questions on the claims?
Assume the department has to go over the claims all the time for their department and...
They'd be the ones submitting them.
They submit them.
Yeah. Did you have a question on any, okay. Well, if not, all in favor of approving the claims, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, four ayes, one abstention. And, okay, any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. Or, four to one, excuse me, four to one abstention. Acknowledge the budget status report.
Can I ask one question about it?
Yeah, I was gonna say one thing too, so go ahead.
Okay, I was gonna ask about the fair board. They haven't requested their money yet?
No, I think they have now, so they are always late requesting it, but I think he did call Melissa and I think they will be getting it here soon, so I think she did talk to him about it.
Yeah, I was just curious about that.
Yeah, if you notice in one part of the budget status report, I think it's mental health, more money has spent, been spent than what's budgeted. That is out of Donna's part of mental health with the transports and stuff, so that will be added to the budget amendment.
That was part of the transports?
No, Donna, Donna does part of that mental health with the transport, so she, that part is over. I think it's just a small amount, a couple hundred dollars, but I will add that to the budget amendment, so we will see that on there too. So in case you notice that, we do.
I actually didn't, I missed that, and I actually went through it, I must have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I missed that too.
So, that will be added to that.
Okay. Okay, we'll let the record reflect that we acknowledge the budget status report then. And then we are up to discussion decision to set date and time for FY twenty-five, twenty-six budget hearing. Looking like April twenty-second at eight-thirty a.m. If that works for everyone. That's the correct date, yeah, okay. So we can entertain a motion for that date and time. Motion by Stecker. Need a second?
I'll second.
Second by Wacter. Any discussion on setting the budget hearing for April twenty-second at eight-thirty a.m.? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. And we have discussion decision jail video replacement. Derek, are you talking on this thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we're looking for approval to replace the recording unit for the jail camera system. It's the brain box for that unit. It has all the hard drives that stores the data over there. The current machine is eight years old, it's running Windows seven, the new machine will be running Windows eleven. And, one of the things that we ran into was an insurance change about a year and a half ago, that they wanted a year's worth of video stored for everything over at the law enforcement center. We used to have about five months, so we added some more hard drive space. Right now, we run about fourteen months, thirteen, fourteen months over there, somewhere in that range. And so with the proposed new server, we're thinking we should be about seventeen months, somewhere in that range. It just varies on where that comes out there, so. We're looking for approval on that, and it is within the IT budget, which is fiscal year.
Did you have any documents for that? I didn't see anything.
Just the quote, wasn't it on the agenda request? I apologize, so thirteen thousand nine hundred four dollars is what it comes off to be. Apologize, I can get you a copy of that if you'd like.
And who is that to, Derek?
What's that, I'm sorry?
What company or who is it to?
North Iowa Telecom, the same company that does the rest of our camera systems.
You said thirteen nine oh four?
Yes, thirteen nine oh four. It's a Vivo Tech branded camera with all of the other cameras that ties in, so it's the same server access, same software, it just integrates, nice thing. Just the new version.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve. We have a motion by Wacter to approve the purchase. Second by Garmin. Any discussion, questions on the upgrading of the camera? Okay. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. Thanks Derek. Have a good day.
You too.
Hey Doug, it's Josh up here in the boardroom, we are up to the resurfacing projects. All right, thanks.
Josh, you don't want these, is that right?
What's that?
You're not signing these?
No, I had them same.
Do we know if he's coming up or is he available for when we get to the lease?
I don't know if he's coming up or not, I guess. I just got the email, you know, that he wanted some changes made, and I knew those weren't changes I should be making, so I put it on the agenda, so.
While we're waiting, do you want to call down there and see if he can?
He doesn't usually get here till about eight-thirty, but you could call and see.
Just, just to give them a heads up?
Yeah.
What number is?
He's one oh one, I think.
No, Doug's one oh one.
I always get that mixed up, he's four, four oh one.
One four, one four one or one four year?
Oh, who do I get that next?
Yeah, one four one is Todd, but.
I knew it ended in one.
Try one forty-two or one forty-three.
Good morning, Doug.
Good morning, Doug. But I don't know if I move this. Try one forty-three.
Morning, Matt.
Good morning.
Hey, this is Josh up in the boardroom, we were just wondering, is Todd planning on coming up for the discussion on the emergency complex, emergency response complex lease? Okay, all right, all right, thanks.
Resolution, Tammy.
She wasn't sure.
Has it been emailed to you? Has that been emailed to you?
Yes, he sent it this morning, thank you.
Okay, well, we are up to awarding contract for twenty-twenty-five secondary road resurfacing projects.
Yeah, two weeks ago, the Iowa Department of Transportation accepted bids on these projects. There's three projects, there's a location map. The Bowe-Hobart Road from Highway eighteen to B sixty-three, what I call the Irvington pavement, from US one sixty-nine, that'd be B fifty-five. US one sixty-nine east to the La Verde-Sexton Road, and then the Hannah Road, which is B sixty-three from the La Verde-Sexton Road over to Highway seventeen. We received bids, the low bid was from Mathi Construction. We estimated total cost for these three projects at five million nine hundred twelve thousand five hundred thirty dollars. Their bid was four million eight hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred sixty dollars and seventy-three cents. There were some other bidders on the project. Hartman, they were close, we feel this is a very, very good bid. And we prepared a resolution for the board supervisors, similar to what has been done in the past. These projects, say, were all programmed with best interest of Cassuth County to complete them. So, resolved that the board accept the bid from Mathi Construction Company in the amount of four million eight hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred sixty dollars and seventy-three cents. And then it also, after all the contract documents are turned in, it has me designated to sign the contract on behalf of the board supervisors. So I could read the whole resolution if you would like, it's there. It should be in your electronic folder, but I would recommend that the board would award this work to Mathi Construction. It is all, the Bowe-Hobart Road and the Hannah Road are farm-to-market funded, so then all that money goes through the Department of Transportation. And the Irvington pavement is a federally funded project, so all the money there goes through the Iowa Department of Transportation. This will go through the local budget. It's all paid for through farm-to-market federal funds.
So the difference, the motion for, so the difference between the bud, or the actual and the budget, it hasn't really no bearing or anything?
No. It allows us a little bit more farm-to-market funding to use in the future.
It saves us money for all the projected.
Can you give me the estimated number throughout the life of that million something?
It was five million nine hundred twelve thousand five hundred thirty dollars.
Thank you.
Sure.
So a little under a million under the estimate?
Yes. Well, a little bit over.
Yeah.
One million fifty-two thousand.
So, a little stupid question, so it worked out to like two-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars a mile? I don't know if it's, if it is that way, or, you know, if it depends on the project? So you don't have an opportunity to add something on or anything like that?
Not this time, no. This was all the resurfacing that we had planned for this year.
Do, again, it's a proper time to ask, do you have any input as to when and where they do these projects, or is it just open-ended, all constructions?
Well, there, there are completion dates that, but we do not specify when they can start and when they can't. We'd like them to begin sometime after frost is out, so that they don't tear up pavements hauling to.
That's, that should've sounded.
Well, still, we'll, we'll see what happens. But anyway, usually by the time the contracts are awarded, they get all of their stuff, it's very difficult to start construction and have construction really moving middle to end of May would be the soonest, really. More in April, they, they have to get some night or get crushed, we allow them to crush some night and get out of our gravel pits. They got some preparation to do.
So, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No.
Do they, do they buy that for them, or is that, that part of the?
We just give that to them.
We supply that, that part of the?
We supply to them for cost-free, they have to pay for the crushing, obviously, but that lowers some of the costs of the mix ultimately.
Somebody asked me, I said I'd ask.
Sure.
Take, take any of the old off, or just?
We are milling an inch off of everything.
And add about much back on?
Uh, three.
So it's gonna go up to it?
Two inches.
And is the three, I, I know it hurts, that's typical. Thank you.
Sure.
I'm done, sorry.
Oh, you're good.
Good question.
Yep, yep. Yeah, this is, we've got resolution oh four, oh, dash oh one, dash two five, dash oh one. And I'd entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Garmin. I'll second the motion. Any discussion on approving the secondary road resurfacing projects resolution here? Okay, then we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Specker?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Thank you, carries unanimous.
Get those signatures. Can this go? Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Good morning, Todd. We can go ahead with construction right away.
Okay, we'll start out, Iowa Lakes Electric Cooperative out of Esterville, they have requested to remove overhead lines that would be going over one hundred ten Avenue and placing those underground for, I think, service to an acreage, or service to a farm site. I would recommend, this would be removing the overhead and moving everything underground for improvement. I'd recommend that the board would approve of this request from Iowa Lakes Electric Cooperative.
I'll second.
Motion by Stecker and second by Wacter. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous.
All right. We have a few of these, Carter, if it'd be all right, might just bring them all up for signature afterwards. The next request is for a tile to be placed under a Cassuth County road. This would be all the work according to our tile road crossing permit. This would be on one hundred ten Avenue north of three hundred sixtieth Street. We have a Boogie, Boogie, Bogey, or whatever, Properties Limited Partnership requesting to go under the road. We have the downstream landowners concurrents. We have all the, all of the information in the application. This is already going, I would recommend that the board would approve of this request as well.
So moved.
Motion by Stecker, second by Garmin. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous.
And then the final request for working the road right away, this is a request from ITC Midwest Bright Tree Services. There's some trees growing underneath of the high voltage transmission line up at the north end of Cassuth County that was recently constructed, and they would like to spray some trees underneath of those to ensure that it doesn't, they do not interfere with the lines in the future. This would be on one hundred eighty Avenue from the substation moving east to the east county line. I, I think there's one or two spots, but I think they're gonna travel the whole length of everything. And I recommend that the board would approve of this as well.
So moved.
Motion by Stecker, second by Haas. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. All right away.
That is all the requests of, for working the road right away. This one, we have a signature of task for Tammy, Tammy, please. I'll get that deed, Carter, you can give that one, and. You'll sign those too. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
We can go ahead with discussion.
Yes. I emailed the board, we did have an accident with motor grader. He had, had a train hit the front V plow of the motor grader. The V plow sustained a lot of damage, there is, looks like there's a little bit of a twist in the frame of the V plow. And the locomotive had some minor damage, according to the people that were at the scene from the Union Pacific, UP, Union Pacific. It occurred March twentieth, I did discipline the operators three days without pay. And that is going on right now. Right now, I'm waiting for the railroad to contact me to discuss damage to their locomotive. We were waiting for the insurance adjuster to come and look at our motor grader. We feel that the motor grader will be able to be used. We may have to take it somewhere to try to do a little bit of twisting, getting that back, but all in all, property damage only, fortunately. Given some advancements, if he would have been going a little bit faster, it could have been a lot worse. Fortunately, the motor grader stayed on the road. I've seen photos, I've never encountered it, but automobiles, motor graders ended up going down the tracks to where the locomotive stopped. And we don't want that. I've also reminded all of our operators to take their time, whether they're entering an uncontrolled intersection, a railroad, trying to remind them. And I hope that anyone listening will be reminded as well. Drive safely, be defensive, look at, look at what's coming. We don't want anyone to be involved in an accident. We are working with FEMA right now on our category Z. That would be administrative reimbursement. We have all the specifics for damages to roads. I did not bring that total up. It ended up being about two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars total. Now we're getting the category Z administration. Working on some open positions still, working on the Iowa DOT budget and program. I may have that completed and ready to present to the board next week. And starting to get, after that budget and program, we'll start getting some equipment ready to go on that. Preparing for an annual meeting for the Waste Management Assur, Association. Financial assurance report to the Department of Natural Resources is due today, but we do have a, in order to fill, complete the financial assurance, we need to have the audit of the county completed, and that is not complete at this time. The financial assurance will be submitted as soon as that is completed. And I have asked for an extension from the Department of Natural Resources, I assume that that is going to be, will be granted. And then just a reminder on the informational meeting up in Lakota on battery energy storage system, that's Thursday, April third, this Thursday at twelve-thirty. Cory and I are planning on attending that. If anyone would like to ride along, you're more than welcome.
Do you know about what you're projecting, or they're projecting, the length of that meeting to be? Is that an all-afternoon deal?
I do not, no.
Okay.
I could certainly email the contact that contacted me and see what the length of the meeting would be. I'm sure a lot, it's a public, open forum, so a lot of it depends on questions, answers, that, how, how that goes.
Yep, yep. I was just curious on how to plan the date or whatever, so.
I will ask the questions, see if we can get a reply.
Yep, but I do plan on coming up. Uh, okay. Any questions for Doug, or?
Uh, one, it doesn't matter, but the motor grader, you saying the frame of the snow plow got twisted, or?
The frame of the plow, when you look at it, you can just, you look at it from the front, you can kind of see.
So the motor grader itself?
The motor grader itself, yeah.
Isn't fine or is fine?
Well, you can see the twist in it. But I don't think that it's going to affect its ability to do its work. Motor grader moves relatively slow. Everything should be able to rotate in the way that it is. We, there are companies that do some alignment, for lack of a better term, on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sure.
Question, I know you've had some experience with UV lining.
Yeah.
And we just wondered, what is your opinion on the performance of that, looking at it for an option for a? Just, yeah, I just didn't know, for a tile project, didn't know what your thoughts were.
Yeah, we, we actually did, did that on some culverts to the north up on A sixteen. Those, those culverts had some separation in it, and it worked very well, it, we didn't have to close down the road. We used some traffic control that limited to one, one lane. When it was all said and done, it was probably similar in cost to if a person, if a person would excavate and open up a road and pay for resurfacing and everything else.
Sure, yeah.
I, given an opportunity, the right opportunity, I'd definitely do it again.
Okay. Yeah.
And, I don't know, Chad Ben Dixon, is that who you've been visiting?
Yeah, yep, with subsurface, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, nice guy.
Very good person to work with. Everything went really well with our work.
Okay, well, good to hear.
Sure.
Any other questions for Doug? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good week. Okay, we are up to discussion decision to review and edit lease for emergency response complex. Morning, Todd.
Good morning. So I got an email from Tammy about you guys passed, or at least had some discussions regarding the emergency response complex and the rent and utilities. The question I have, or that needs to be determined, if you're wanting to have a lease drafted, is we need more information regarding the other aspects of tenancy. Is there gonna be any specific? Is there gonna be any specific division of the building between the entities? Who's renting what? Are you gonna have three people renting the entire building, or three agencies renting the entire building? Do you wanna have separate leases for each one?
I don't know if it makes a huge difference, but the, I guess, the concept I was operating under in my head was that it would be, like, the percentages we base kind of on space that was used roughly, so whether that gets reviewed annually or every couple of years, whatever. But I think it's more a general split, and then whether it's one document or three documents, do you have any preference?
Well, if you're not gonna have it separated out, we can probably do with, with one. I assume how they're going to do it is have one account with the utilities, depending on who they are and just split it.
That'll be paid by the board and then reimbursed in regards by the tenants.
Because it's not a, it's not like it's a, a strip with business, 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 you know?
Because it, because it'd be one meter, one electrical connection, all those types of things.
And it's twenty thousand dollars a year with sixty by EMA, thirty by EMS, and ten by E nine one one.
Yep, for rent.
What about maintenance?
That's basically what it was based for, was for maintenance.
Oh, that's not for the rent?
It's in the, it's in the form of rent, but we were talking about basically.
Rent would go towards maintenance, is what Kyle said.
That we would hold for maintenance.
Okay, so the board's, the county's gonna take on, or the board's gonna take on all maintenance?
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, I don't know if we need anything in there as far as, like, tables, chairs, general stuff, or painting, little stuff like that could be done by the departments, but, I mean, that's obviously pretty minor, but we're talking like actual maintenance and repair of the building was gonna be covered by what we were.
Is maintenance also including the cleaning and taking care of it, or how, if, if it's a county building, who's gonna rent for it? I mean, who's taking on all of the cleaning and?
That wouldn't be maintenance, that would be upkeep, but, I mean, that's a question I was gonna get to. I mean, who's gonna do that? Is it, the county that's gonna take care of that with our custodians, or?
Right now, they take care of it themselves. Custodial staff does not, so.
Custodians do not help.
They don't do anything with that building.
No, so I would prefer it left that way, but that is completely up to you.
Talk to you guys.
Just like any other business, you rent a building, you're responsible for keeping it cleaned up.
Yeah, I think right now Carissa's doing it, you know, the cleaning up of it, the rest of it.
I know Phil, Phil does what he needs.
Yeah, Phil does the thing and does it himself as well, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's all just kinda shared outside.
Yeah, we just share that, that building. Most of the time I just do, pardon me.
Is that something you guys are comfortable just continuing doing that way?
We're both fine with that.
Yeah, I would, I don't know if you got any general language you wanna put in there. The tenants will take care of their own.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's kind of a common, it's a common, um, condition.
Yeah.
More importantly, I was just wanna know how many of this was. How long is the lease going to be? Term of the lease?
I don't know if we talked on term, but I guess I would say every two years and then have a renewal or?
That's fine. Typically, the lease term doesn't necessarily mean that it's only theirs for a year, but technically it does. But the reality is that it extends on and continues as long as there's no changes. The problem with having a multiple year lease is that, you know, you're bound by the years that you put as far as the conditions within it. If you ever wanna change rent, if you ever wanna change any of the other terms or conditions, then you're stuck with that, that initial term. And it continues on, when it continues on, it'll continue on for a life term. So a year would be another year if it doesn't get changed or terminated, so. Yeah, I mean, two years is fine, it just is up to, to the board.
Well, my thought on like two years, it might be, since this is in the process right now, it might be good to get settled into it and then, you know, have our discussion so we're always in a timeline for the budget, you know, if anything's going to be changed.
Sure.
You know, in, instead of, cause like right now, we're talking about it, well, if it's.
Well, and maybe.
I don't know if we'll be ready to change it after six months.
I mean, if, yeah, if we had it structured where it was, say, ending in, well, like if it was December of this year, whether at the end of the month or beginning to avoid holidays or something, then you could have that kind of timeline in advance of the next year's budget, so you could have the effective date be at the next fiscal year, but the renewal time period. And the discussion for having that decision be in front of it potentially.
So, I mean, what I'm hearing is if you have the initial term be July first, twenty twenty five to July first, or to June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven for the two-year term, as far as the discussion on it, then you would wanna have, you know, some sort of system to remind you to put it on the board for discussion. I assume that the agencies are going to also probably want to discuss once it's becoming, or at least it's, it's on the radar to be discussed. I mean, I assume that there'd be some cooperation there, but.
Yeah, because like Carissa's budget isn't yours, done pretty, quite a bit earlier than ours.
It's supposed to be in February twenty.
So.
So if we had conversation in December.
For first Tuesday of, of December, if we kinda set that as our.
Every other year, kind of?
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
So two thousand twenty-six is when we'll do it, December of twenty-sixth, right? Because it's through June thirtieth of twenty-seven.
Well, yeah, that would, yeah. Yeah, we.
So if the initial term is two years, is it the thought process that the renewals, well, and if you don't do anything, it's for another two years?
Mm-hmm, well, I mean, that's, that's typically for a life period. I mean, it could be month to month if you wanted it that way after the first two years, but that doesn't really work well with, with government.
And, and two years would correlate with elections. You have two or three board members that'd be up. I mean, you have budget cycles.
But to Howard's point, I mean, that's another negotiated term, if you wanted to, if it made sense to change the length of the term at that, after that two-year term, you can change it to one, you can change it to three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Given the.
Doesn't have to be done now, is the point?
Correct.
So I will put it on my rolling calendar to happen first Tuesday, December in twenty twenty-six, and then every other year after to discuss the lease for the emergency response complex.
Yeah. Insurance, obviously the structure and all of that would be owned by the board. Will there be insurance required of the tenants for their area? Renters' insurance typically is what it's called? Or is it kinda just gonna take it all over?
I mean, we would already have our, our insurance would kinda cover all of our stuff right now for our internal agencies.
Is that something we need to check with Bridget, to see if that's required?
Well, I don't know if they're, are they part of our insurance?
Well, EMS would be, a county department, EMA, and nine one one are separate entities.
All my stuff in the building is all insured with I-CAP.
With I-CAP, they have I-CAP also, so.
So it'd be the same.
So the point of that discussion is that you basically do have renters' insurance?
The equipment, anything that emergency management owns in there is covered under I-CAP, our, I-CAP insurance that emergency management pays for.
So the county has the insurance on the building?
I understand.
Each entity has insurance on the equipment.
Their property.
But if you, yeah, everybody can correct me if I'm wrong. I'm not gonna be offended in the slightest, but like with typical renters' insurance, if, if you're, if you're at fault, you're gonna be paying for some, for some, or your insurance will be paying for some damage, not the, not the lease holder.
You're not.
And then my, and then my question from there would be, is if we're renting it out, in theory, but in fact, we are renting it out, is our insurance gonna say, they were at fault, they should have been added renters' insurance?
That's the question. I mean, that's exactly what I was getting to. The property's probably not as big of an issue with the, the insurance as the liability. I mean, we're gonna have, I presume, guests coming on to the, the property, things like that as far as.
Occasionally, yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, then you have a situation where, okay, slip and fall would be the easiest example. Should have been cleaned up and wasn't, and okay, who's insurance kicking in to pay for it? What you don't want to have is a bunch of finger pointing between insurance companies. I mean, that's, that's just the way it is.
A good conversation to have with our insurance.
Yeah, I can send an email to Bridget and see what she suggests with a copy of the lease once, you know, I can send her an email now and see what she recommends.
Do you know insurance for general liability for your agencies?
Most of the time we're just under.
Just under the counter?
I mean, there's liability there now anyway with having to drive through and the, the tenants on the strip mall there parking. Now that gets cleaned up at the same time. So, I mean, there's liability always there.
Again, until we write the lease, I'm confident our insurance.
Sure, absolutely.
As soon as, as soon as we write this lease, I'm not as confident.
Well, that's the, that's the, the issue as far as what we're talking about with this lease. I mean, I guess I was under the impression of the discussion months ago was that they're separate agencies.
EMA and E nine one one are, EMS would be the county department.
Right, well, yeah, central service, but so we'll need to find that out.
The utilities, I know you had a question about utilities. Todd, you have, I sent you those percentages too.
Yeah, I have the percentages. I just didn't know if it was going to be separate or, I got that answer, but we're paying for it all and then they're reimbursing. All right. Any questions? I mean, that, that to me is what I wasn't quite sure of when I got the email, so I can have this prepared or at least put into the one that I sent, although the one that I sent was a triple net, I had a triple net option, which isn't necessarily what we're talking about, so.
Yeah, that's why I thought it'd be better to have you up here for the conversation.
Yeah, and I just missed it on the.
Delete certain things and change.
Well, that's all right. I just missed it on the agenda. But I did catch the other one. Do you want me up for the ordinance?
Solar ordinance?
No, the.
The annual one.
Yeah, which that's, that's the next item.
Next item anyway.
Oh, well, oh, I'm here. But I can, once I get the answer on the insurance issue, I can probably put it together and yet today, and you can have it for next week.
Sounds good, whenever you get that figured out.
I do. Is there, is there any question about, in this lease, what property's included and not included? Is it, is it the newish building? Is it the whole corner? What is it?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, the UVC, I was just going to put it with the legal description for the entire property that the UVC building.
I know what gender it is.
Good question, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I don't know if any of the percentages were really derived from the cold storage part of that building.
Is that gonna be part of it?
Yeah, there is the stuff back in the cold storage, but no, the percentages weren't off of that. It was just basically the, the other side.
So I'll just identify it as the real estate associated with a purchase of the UVC building.
Yeah.
After you get a draft of it, you know, after these changes, probably, like, the commission will have to approve that, so will there be a timeframe that the different entities can look at that? I know nine one one isn't gonna make as much of a difference, but with EMS and EMA, even though EMS is just, you know, an advisory council, they don't make the decision, but I think that we should provide them the ability to, to look at that, and I know your commission will have to approve it.
So what I can do is email it to the board, Carissa, Phil.
And Derek.
And Derek. Just send it, and then let you guys decide. I mean, maybe you wanna have a date set just to discuss it, and if it's all okay with everybody, then you can sign it, but I'll do it that way.
Can you put me in there too, Todd?
I always do.
Thank you.
That's by default.
Yes. I figured.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
And I assume, if I get trouble with it, of course. So the snow removal, the county does it, or who does it?
Yeah.
The road department or?
Yeah, the road department.
And the oil, yeah.
Yeah, Will does go down.
I missed that.
Will goes down as well.
Okay, and then that, so weeds and there is no lawn, I'm sure.
So we do spray weeds. That's kind of been a hot topic because those weeds do not respond well sometimes, but Will and Ron do spray weeds down there, so.
So, so that'll continue snow removal and weed control and lawn maintenance by the county?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's good.
And then back to the, sorry, I'm beating dead marks here, but back to the property description. The sheriff's department has the east side of the railroad tracks?
Yes.
And that's not included in this?
Correct.
And as that, you understand that as a differentiation?
I do now. So it will not be the entire legal description, it'll just be the UBC building?
Correct.
Okay.
Maybe east of, west of the railroad track.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I have, under no pretense that I've thought of every little thing or anything, but.
East just storage, like a storage unit, or what is the, what is these?
I have looked for a while. Storage, but they do have it insulated and heated and stuff, so they can have vehicles in there to, like, dig through them and do their investigation and protect the environment and that type of stuff as well. Trainings in certain situations, yeah. So they have a regular uses. The lot stuff they can store cars or vehicles that were towed.
In town vehicles.
In town stuff, so, and it's multi-faceted.
Do they still have it over there in the county shed too, by the Honda shop or the sportsman's corner? No, that's where it moved on to that. All right.
Okay, well, any other questions or things we need to discuss before coming back to it next week?
I think.
Or whenever you decide.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
As long as Todd's got his questions answered.
Okay.
I do.
Okay, well, we can table that for now and, and move on to the next agenda item then. Be discussion decision to set date and time for public hearing for animal control ordinance and direct the auditor to publish the notice. It's in your packet here. Now that it's been revised, anyone have questions, concerns? Anything on the ordinance?
I did list it as ordinance number seven oh one, if that was okay with everybody.
I didn't know the number, and just off of that, so I know there's going to be three additional ordinances coming or amended ordinances. I think you may have spoken with Kendall Stummey regarding, one is removing, I think, parks from whatever, the, the. but for ordinances that are in existence now that we're mending, are you just adding the next letter? So that one was one fourteen B, so then it'll be one fourteen C. So, just so I know for future reference, um, but yeah, this one has the livestock portions removed, uh, from it, so it's just regarding, in reality, dogs and cats, domesticated animals, I suppose, there could be some out there ferrets and those types of things, but, um, as far as dogs and cats, um, control, the, the ones that are running at large, I believe we have gone through that before, so.
Yep.
I don't know if Roger, I did send him a copy, I don't know if Roger is sending it.
I mean, yeah, he was, as far as the livestock stuff, he said that was up to us, but he didn't, he didn't really give much of an opinion when I was here, so. Do we have a date that would work?
Um, well, I think for the ordinance, it has to be between four and twenty, am I correct on that? Um, so, um, we could either do it the fif, if it gets published next week, the tenth, it could either be fifteenth or twenty second, so. I'll leave that up to you guys.
Twenty second is our.
Twenty second.
Pleasure here.
Yeah, yeah.
If we keep it separate from that, you might just never know how long that might take.
So fifteenth, that would be fifteenth then.
Fifteenth at what time, nine, or do you care what time?
Can we do right away at the beginning of the evening?
Sure, just eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Okay.
Sure, yep.
I would do, yeah, I would do our agenda in minutes and, um, then do that right, right after.
Okay.
Okay, so it'd be eight AM, April fifteenth, for the public hearing for the animal control ordinance, does anyone wanna make that motion?
Just one, can I ask one question? Or maybe.
I'll, I'll do the motion and then get a second.
Yeah, Kyle's got a motion.
I'll second.
Well, after second, okay, ask your question.
Well, I was just gonna ask, what if in case that day there's a public discussion, do we wanna make it like, is there, do we allow fifteen minutes for a public discussion? Has that been, like, do we want, or do we wanna do public after?
We can always start it later, we can always start it later.
You can start it later, okay, I do.
You can have it later on the agenda.
Public if you add to, okay.
Yeah, if, if we don't get to it until eight oh three or eight ten or eight fifteen, it's, it's not an issue that way.
Meaning the public discussion.
We can't start it earlier, we didn't, but we can start later than, than scheduled. That's where I, I mean, if we put it on for eight fifteen or eight thirty and then we have to top our agenda, we sit here, have a break, right?
Yeah, no, I just want, I don't care what time, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't gonna interfere, I didn't know it could be later.
Okay, so we've got a motion and second then to set the date and time for the public hearing for the animal control ordinance and to direct Tammy, yeah, and to direct Tammy to publish, uh, for eight AM on April fifteenth. We need further discussion on that motion. If not, uh, we'll do, we need a roll call voter, okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, nay, motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
Two birds with one stone, did I send that to you in a word, or was it in a U P or a P?
One of the original documents was word.
The most original one, or the most recent one, I should say, I'm not sure, if you need me to add things to it, let me know.
Yeah, okay, and even if it's PDF, I can change it if I need to.
Okay. Perfect.
Thanks, Todd, thanks. Okay, we are then up to discussion decision on solar ordinance workshop.
Cause the decision was broken.
The decision without attorney, like we talked about last time.
Yeah, well, that's how it was listed on the agenda, but discussion for solar ordinance workshop.
Well, I was just asking because I didn't know what decision we.
No, we're not, we're not making a decision, it's just what to send to the attorney.
Okay.
And I need to get, sorry, where's my paper here? Okay, so what I have from last time we met and discussed this, uh, things we wanted to send the, to the attorney, we had a hundred feet from a tile each way, we had three hundred feet from the center of an open ditch, we did not have a definition of setback for airports, we're, you know, follow the FAA regulations on that unless someone brings forth a different opinion on that, um, we need a definition of what an occupied residence is, and then we need a decommissioning plan, and really that decommissioning plan should have the county completely out of that, maybe no responsibility for decommissioning whatsoever, that.
I was going to ask that, and I was going to suggest that, just from input and that.
Right, the county having no liability regarding decommissioning.
County having no liability, period.
Correct, but the decommissioning is gonna be the major part of that, yeah, yeah. Road, road use and repair agreement. And we had discussed setting it at a twenty foot height limit. Options for security fence and screening, I just, I had just had the words written down, I did not have any specifics related to them. We had a fifty foot buffer from a property line, and we were defining the limitations of the ordinance to be greater than thirty acres or ten megawatts, as for who that applies to as a utility.
Will you say that again, great, no, not greater than thirty acres?
Well, it would, it would apply to all those greater than thirty acres or ten megawatts, is what this ordinance would apply to.
Okay.
So, anything below that would not, would not qualify?
Correct.
Is, is that because of the definition between commercial and?
Community and utility.
Community and, okay.
And the state's gonna override us on that in a month anyway, uh, so five hundred foot setback from an occupied residence with waivers is what I had for setback. And then we would be looking at a separate battery storage ordinance to pair alongside of it. That would be a general battery storage ordinance, not specific to solar, but it would be done at the same time. That's what I have.
Can you repeat what you had on that, um, thirty acres or the megawatts or?
Thirty acres and ten megawatts, so anything greater than thirty acres, anything greater than ten megawatts is what the numbers that were thrown out at that discussion.
Is it and or or?
Either or.
I think it's an and or. And the state is gonna define that as anything greater than five megawatts would no longer be community solar.
Okay.
Which we could, we could match that definition too, I don't really.
So is there?
The only problem I have with that though too is, as technology advances, you're gonna give more megawatts with less space.
That's why you'd, that's why you'd amend the ordinance and adjust it like we do on any other ordinance, I mean, and that's, we could leave it at ten too, I don't have any issue with it, but.
Is there, is there a typical, um, can you even answer the question as a typical, how many acres make, um, ten megawatts would make up?
That'd be, depending on the project, you're gonna have seven to ten acres per megawatt, am I right, Jacob, yep, so.
Okay, so the people like I was talking to that are being, considering, you know, thirty to fifty acres, they probably would be okay. I guess my big thing is I, I just wanna, I wanna understand it, just, and I don't have more discussion, but I wanna understand it because I don't wanna prohibit them from, um,
Right.
Going forward if they like.
The maximum size of a community solar footprint area is gonna be about thirty acres, um, if, if that's what you're talking about, you know, those smaller projects. Uh, they might get an easement for your forty acre parcel or whatever your parcel size is, um, but they're really not going to, that's just to give them wiggle room to, to work in that area, but yeah, I mean, they're, it's about thirty acres is the maximum size of a community solar, maybe a little bit bigger, but not much bigger.
Okay.
So, cause then you start getting into more of the commercial end of things. We, I mean, we don't have to have an acres in the ordinance either, it's just, I guess that's, that's up to you guys, but.
Because are we, are, is our ordinance for commercial or?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so.
Which is why it got set at thirty acres, yeah.
So anything over thirty acres is commercial?
Correct, that's how we're defining it here, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was just a definition of what, okay, I'm, okay, I understand now.
That's the definition we were wanting to send to the attorney, is anything greater than thirty acres or greater than ten megawatts, yeah.
Okay, thank you, I was misunderstanding that before, so thanks for my time.
Yeah, then those people would fall under the ordinance, anything less than that.
So if you're doing eight megawatts on twenty acres, you're completely not.
Okay.
Yeah.
If, if you can make that work, but yeah.
Right, just, just a quick.
Um, the screening, I think, and I don't remember if we ever put a height or a number on that, but, um, I guess I would think that should be either a hundred or a hundred and ten percent of height of the panels.
Oh.
Just if, if they're twenty feet tall, I mean, and this is, of course, we're, again, we're talking about thirty acres or more or ten megawatts or more, but if it's a five hundred acre project, I, if you're gonna do screening, it should be enough to actually screen it, in my opinion. So, I don't know if anyone has thoughts there.
Yeah, I was kinda thinking around a hundred and ten percent.
I mean, we did hundred and ten percent for like tip height and, um, some of those numbers for wind turbines, and I mean, you're obviously talking about less here, but if it's twenty height, twenty for a height of a panel, you'd need twenty two for screens, so.
Are, are, are we requiring screening, or, or what are you saying, I'm, I'm, what's the definition of screening?
So I was gonna ask that too, is, is this a, you know, an option to neighboring landowners, to neighboring occupied residences to request screening, or is this just a, you have to have screening if you, is that something, no matter where you put it up, or how?
Is that something we can, we can put as a requirement unless waived? Because if they're gonna have to do waivers, if they're within certain distance from properties, maybe that's something they include on the waiver. Are you okay with having or not having?
Could be, could be unless waived by the neighboring adjacent landowner.
Because if the adjacent landowner is, is signing an agreement saying that they're fine having it within five hundred feet of their, their property, they can also say, I don't care if they do screening or not.
Right, and I, I don't know if some do natural screening versus like, say, trees or something versus, um, man-made constructed fences and stuff, so I mean, if you go with a tree, then you probably need to say it's supposed to reach a certain height within a certain number of years.
Right.
So I mean, there's pieces to that, but.
If you're not gonna have a twenty two foot tree, you know, in a year.
Not unless you pay a lot of money.
Right.
Um, which is obviously unreasonable, so, I guess, yeah, just food for thought as we went through the list, but I don't know if there's. What did you have for like your first three items, I wrote down tile and then ditch, I don't remember if I missed something.
Hundred, hundred foot from the center of a drainage district tile, and then.
Did you say three hundred for that?
Three hundred from the center of an open ditch.
For the center of the ditch.
Open ditch, okay, I wrote that down.
Yeah, I just felt like I missed something else when you were starting off, which.
And then I had airports.
Airports, okay, I did not.
Those were the first three.
What'd you say, from tile?
A hundred feet, a hundred feet from tile, three hundred feet from open ditch.
Hundred feet from the center.
Of the tile.
Of the tile.
Three hundred feet from the center of the open ditch, yep, yep.
So it'd be a hundred each way and three hundred each way.
Mm-hmm.
And for the airports, it was following the FFA.
Regulations.
FAA regulations, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I was just trying to make sure I had my notes updated too.
That's everything I had from our conversation last time.
Well, I think that, I mean, we, we've kinda touched on things that, you know, people have, I mean, the one thing was addressing the ti, the drainage, which that's been the one thing that, the only thing people have said, you know, that's their concern, so we're addressing that and, um, I, I don't know, that's about the only thing I've heard of, any kind of a.
Tile's been the biggest one on my radar.
Worries, mm-hmm, so, I think, as far as I'm concerned, we've covered it, it's a good start. Want our attorney to be able to guide us if there's certain things and if that we need, you know?
Yeah, they'll come back with suggestions and say, hey, you got this in here, what if we did it this way, you know? And ultimately, it's our decision, they'll, they'll give us, you know, pointers on, on, you know, this is good that you put in here, but what if we did this, kinda thing? And then we work through the whole process and come to conclusion at the end, then we decide, so.
Well, and it might be valuable if we send the decommissioning plan and road use and repair agreement that we've already had for the wind projects and stuff and send that to them as similar documents, I mean, I don't think they'd be starting from scratch anyway, but.
Well, they're gonna look at our current ordinance and see what we have. You're not, you're not gonna want.
They're only gonna look at stuff that we send them, they're not gonna dig through.
No, they're not.
Records in the auditor's office for the fun of it, that would be, that would be a big bill.
Nor do I want them to.
Well, right.
But I believe in the wind ordinance for decommissioning, the county does have involvement in the decommissioning and, cause it's the price of scrap, isn't that?
There's a salvage value.
Or for salvaging, um, in the recycling of those blades and things, should things get decommissioned.
That just reduces the bond that they're required to have because it counts as a value to the project, but.
But it does involve the county somewhat in, in that process, and my point being, anything that gets put in the solar, we don't, we don't wanna have any involvement in the disposal or.
Yeah.
Decommissioning of any of that.
I don't know that it involves the county per se, but I would, I mean, it would be a point that could be made in communication with them and our discussions with them of saying, hey, this is what we've done before, but we wanna make sure that this is a line that's drawn, just.
Right, the taxpayers don't need to be paying for that.
Right.
Uh, I guess, yeah, and my, I don't mean to be the horse either here, but, no, I know I've said it before, but I just, I don't think our setbacks are, are big enough, and, and I, but I, I say that because, well, what's the setback from a hog building?
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred feet, setback from wind turbine is sixteen hundred feet, and then we got setback from a solar panels, five hundred feet. What, what determines what nuisance is better or worse, or, I mean, they all have, have noise, they have, you, you see them, you have, I mean, you're, you know, you can make up a whole bunch of things, is having a hog building five hundred feet from your house going to kill you? No, is it going to give you cancer? No, I mean, you're gonna find all that stuff out there that people go to the extremes or whatever, and, and I guess my, my thing is, what, what makes a, what makes one better or worse, and why do we have different setbacks for all these different things? I understand there are different regulations and, and such things like that, the second thing is that this is our home, I mean, it's a lot of people's homes, if I went out to Yellowstone, I would be severely. If I went out to Yellowstone, I would be severely disappointed if there was a bunch of solar panels everywhere, or a bunch of wind turbines, or a bunch of hog buildings, or whatever it is. I mean, that's why there's regulations, and I feel like, yeah, I, I value that, cause those are national parks, you know, those are beautiful areas. I think my home is a beautiful place too, I think this is a place that needs to be valued above all else, and so there's, there is a quality of life aspect to that. I mean, if somebody put a hog building five hundred feet from my house, that affects my quality of life. If somebody puts a wind turbine or a solar, you know, commercial solar project five hundred feet from my house, that does affect my quality of life, no matter how you see that or not, I mean, it's. They're still twenty feet tall, and, and that, they're still there, there's still lights, there's still whatever, is it the same as wind, is it the same as hog building? No. But I just want the board to think about that, that, in my opinion, that would affect my quality of life. And those regulations can get too far, government does that, I mean, that's why I bought some fencing the other day, and it says, you know, warning, this may cause cancer, and. You know, and, and that's thanks to the state of California and whatever else, but. Am I worried about that causing me cancer? No, but there is a point to where government's there to protect a certain level of quality of life for the people. And I just don't, I just don't see. This knowing what six hundred sixty feet, you know, an eighth of a mile is, knowing what a quarter of a mile is, and how much land is still available, even with that small of a setback, or that large, depending on how, which way you're looking at it. I just don't see how that's a, having a little larger setback, still with an option for waiver, is gonna. Kabosh a project either, so that's, that's my opinion, I just wanted to, wanted to make those couple points.
Is it safe to say this is a draft, so that's, or would you like us to change it today, what we're wanting to put in there, or just readdress that when it comes back to it?
Oh, I mean, I. I'd love to change it today, but we can readdress it when, when it comes back too. I just, I just wanna make that clear, that is a hill that I will die on, you know, and, so, I, and that, you know, it is what it is, but.
No, that's good.
Yeah.
Well, and, and that is a good point, I mean, it would be a draft, in my opinion, and I'm not. I'm, I wouldn't be concerned about adjusting any of the numbers after we would get it back, I mean, we could always send it to them for a final review once we're done, done. But at the end of the day, if we change a hundred feet from a tile to say a hundred and fifty feet, or a hundred feet to go to seventy-five. Attorney's probably not gonna have a big input on that.
No, and I know this is not a final project, by any means, but I'm just throwing this out there to think about, do as what you want, but.
Yeah, yeah.
What do you want the setback to be?
Oh, I think, I mean, right now, the board wants to send five hundred setbacks with waivers, and that, that's fine if that's what we initially wanted to send, but.
Yeah.
What, what would you suggest? What number was it that you're thinking?
Well, I'm, I would like a thousand. So. But food for thought, you know, we can have a discussion.
Maybe, cause I know you referenced it before, but the maps that Luke created for the pipeline stuff to show that representation. It might, might be valuable to do, say, five hundred as an example, and a thousand as an example.
Yeah, he can pull that up very easily.
Maybe. Maybe more, maybe less, whatever, and if he can, and I, I think he can, I, I'm not gonna speak for him for sure, but. If he could even put that into a percentage of area that would be taken out with, um, locations inside those circles or anything of that nature, so we could say, okay.
Yeah.
This is factually gonna take out one percent of ground that would be eligible, or twenty percent, or whatever that metric lands on.
Right. And he can set it, you know, to take out hog buildings, or to take out whatever, if you're wanting just occupied residences, if you're wanting all buildings, if you're wanting, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but I think having, having the circles is one thing for a visual, but even having a.
Percentage.
Number and a percentage of total acres in the county and total acres that this one thing would affect.
Right.
It might be valuable to see that, because, I guess. I think it's, well, I think it's common sense that if that number was fifty percent of acres in the county that it's gonna take out, it's much more of an impact than half a percent.
Correct.
It's, it, it's just a, a relative scale, and obviously, we'd all put our own opinions on that, whether it's based on our own knowledge, or constituent feedback, or combination, whatever. But, so we, that's an opinion-based decision, but if we have numbers that correlate and, um, represent what that decision would look like, it might help.
Mm-hmm, oh, that, that would be really, that would be really good information to know.
Yeah, I mean, so, we could still send a draft to an attorney, but then, as far as final numbers, final conversations, we could work on getting background information along the way.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I guess that'd be my recommendation and thoughts for today.
That's a good thought, so. Um, any clarity then that you need Tammy for what to send?
Um, well, do you want me to repeat what I have written down to see if it's accurate?
That's fine, yeah, it's fine, yeah.
Okay, so, um, I have a hundred foot from the center of tile, three hundred foot from the center of the open ditch, follow FIA regulations for airports. Need a definition of occupied residence, need decommissioning plan, the county should have no liability for decommissioning. Um, road use and repair agreement, does that mean we have one or we need one?
I would say we need their opinion on one, but I would send what we previously have for decommissioning and road use and repair agreements in. In the communication as far as like supporting documents, so we could look at that, whether it's a template, or whether they give it a blessing and say it's good enough, whatever, but. I wouldn't, I wouldn't recreate the wheel entirely.
Okay. Um, okay, twenty foot height limits, options for. Secure.
Never mind, sorry.
Don't talk about that noise.
Oh.
Jacob, question, uh, before Tammy goes, cause for the security fence issue, for all your utility projects, is there a security fence around the whole thing?
Yeah, I believe so, I mean.
Is that standard amongst all companies?
Yeah, I think so, I think there.
Right, go on, dear, run it through there, or whatever.
There is something regulated since it's, you know, an electric utility, I think you almost have to.
Right, so.
That probably should be.
Similar to how the substations are and.
Somebody. Yeah, somebody regulates that on a.
Required in a company to put up a fence is not gonna scare them off, you know, right?
No, no, so just, yeah, require a security fence.
So, leave options for security fence and screening?
Require a security fence.
Requires.
Require.
Uh, and then the screening.
Discuss options, maybe, or.
Yeah, discuss options, or, could tie that to the setback, or whatever other option.
I mean, it could be, it could be tied in with the security fence, I mean, it could be with a waiver too, but yeah, I mean.
So, if I do require security fence and discuss options for screening?
Just have some discussion about that. Yeah.
Okay, uh, fifty foot buffer from property line.
Well, what's the buffer, is that, is that from an actual panel, or is that for everything, or?
From the footprint of the project, yeah, where the panels would begin.
The screening can be in that fifty feet?
I would, I would say the fencing and screening could be within the fifty feet.
Right. Fencing would have to be about, well, it would have to be.
Would, I mean, you could have the fence be fifty foot setback, but then you, you gotta strip all the way around someone's property potentially, that. Has an old fence from a hundred years ago, and then a brand new fence from today that's twenty feet tall.
And some people might like that, and some people might not.
Yeah, I guess.
Cause I know like with the community stuff, they'll just fence around the project, and they'll leave you with a fifty foot buffer strip on the outside, and that's your responsibility to maintain, or bail, or. You know, plant a few rows of crops, or whatever you wanna do with it, but, yeah.
Yeah, I suppose, could, could go either way, I don't have a strong desire.
Okay, ordinance applies to all property greater than thirty acres and or ten megawatts.
All projects.
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 Instead of property.
Okay, all projects, sorry, thank you for that. Okay, five hundred foot setback from occupied residents with rave waivers, um, and a separate battery storage ordinance, not specific to solar.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
I don't have anything else, I wanna go back to your, your comments on, I don't know what words to give out, what quality of life, was that the? So, if, I, I, I really wasn't all that familiar that we had planting and zoning and everything, but, but i- if I wanna build it, my wheelhouse, if I'm gonna build a grain bin, do I have to come to the county to have permission to do it?
I don't know.
Depends where you're.
My interpretation, is it okay for me to speak?
You go ahead, Doug.
My interpretation of that is that it is agricultural use and agriculture is exempt from zoning.
So, all right, that, that, that's a, that's a, thanks, that's a big distinction, uh, I'm not, I'm not looking to protect. Hey, what I'm actually looking to do is to, to measure, you know, what is and isn't the, so theoretically. I can, I can go across the road from your house and build a, as long as it's for farm or use, I can, I can build.
Machine shed or.
Seventy-five foot diameter, a hundred foot tall grain bins, and there's nothing anybody can do about it?
I.
Probably not.
There would, there would be no need for planning and zoning to give you a permit.
But if you were building a.
Commercial grain.
Lodge, or a commercial building, or something like that, you would fall under different requirements. And it wouldn't be a.
In most of these, I maybe that's a question for you, I don't know, in most of these, is it, um, is the company owning the ground, or?
In our case, yes, I, I'm honestly not super familiar, I would look at, Alliant has a decent amount of solar projects around the state, what they do exactly. I think they also own the land for most of their projects, some, some do lease, but at least in our case, you know, when you don't need, when you talk wind projects, we're looking at, you know, if we get forty thousand acres signed up. Not quite the company to just go out and start buying forty thousand acres of land, but for a solar project, we might only need, you know, five hundred or a thousand, now that's a little more realistic to be able to, to purchase, um.
Yeah.
Just curious, could, again, the property tax, you know, because the zoning would change on that property.
I think usually when they lease land, the company, and depends on your agreement with, with the landowner, but I think. Standard way of doing it is, the company will make up the difference in the property tax value. Um, the landowner is still responsible for the, the base, or, um, their portion of it, and then any added value that the project puts on your property. The utility company would then either reimburse or pay, or however that works. But that's agreement between them and the landowner.
What do you, what do you see typically, uh, or have you seen for the screening business, what, what do you?
Uh, so I should pull one up, just kinda, like, for what we do, or what counties say, or I guess, yes, yes.
Good answer, Alfred.
Yeah, um, honestly, the screening's not in a ton of ordinances. Now, naturally, kinda do some of it, just to, to negate anything that, I mean, may be a disturbance to someone, if someone has a complaint looking at it, I mean. Have gone out and planted trees for them, obviously, that's not like a constant thing, cause like you were saying, a twenty foot tree's not very cheap, um, but.
I don't think they're in high supply to.
Yeah. Um, so like screening example, a landscape buffer may be required to be installed and maintained during the life of the operation. Determination of screening requirements will be made by the Board of Adjustments as part of, uh, the review and approval process. And will be based on adjacent or nearby surrounding land uses, so, obviously.
So, you, so you wouldn't need it around the whole thing, but if there was a house, you might.
Yeah, and obviously, don't wanna put, that kind of, the language in there is, you know, don't wanna put a completely different tree, or brook, bush, or whatever it is, so it just. Looks completely out of, out of place, you know, and might make it look natural as much as possible, and then. Uh, within the same ordinance, just since, uh, it just says pretty much in a quick, well, paragraph, a security fence must be installed along the exterior. Um, of the utility scale solar installation, and may be equipped with a minimum of one gate, and locking mechanism on the primary access side. Security fences, gates, and warning signs must be maintained in good condition until the utility scale, uh, solar installation is dismantled and removed from the site. Fencing must meet NEC requirements at the time of the application, so, all that, that's not really requiring a height, it's just saying, you gotta put a fence around it, so.
I'm sure an attorney would have language that would probably be fairly similar to that.
Yeah, yeah, so, that was off of Montgomery Counties, I think, I just had theirs up on my phone, it's there last week, so.
When you want me to send this email, do you want me to? I know you've been looking at some templates, do you want me to send a copy of a template, do you want me, how do you want me to, no?
I don't know, I mean, wouldn't they have something, I'm sure these attorneys are probably done.
I know you had a couple that you kind of liked the layout of, so I didn't know.
Well, maybe, maybe that's where we roll into the discussion about attorneys, anyone, talked to anyone?
We were wanting to go with Ailer and Cooney, and.
That was one of the things we talked about before.
As far as a specific attorney, cause this would be appointing a firm rather than a specific attorney, wouldn't it?
Well.
Because they do change attorney.
Should probably be both to some degree, and I reached out to Tim Whipple to ask if he dealt with that or not. And he said Maria Brownell was someone in their office that had dealt with several counties' ordinances for solar.
At Alers and Cooney.
At Alers and Cooney, yeah.
One of Tim's affiliates.
It'd be, it'd be a counterpart, or coworker, however you wanna phrase it, yeah, so, I mean. That's who he mentioned at their firm, as someone that has experience with this stuff, so.
What are our options? I mean, you said we talked about doing the Alers and Cooney, I don't remember talking about it, but we could've, what were our options?
I, I don't know who all does solar out there.
I don't know if we talked about anyone else, really, I know we talked about Alers and Cooney because we use them for HR and other stuff that way, so. It was probably a two-second mention, but, um, I don't know if we had any big discussion.
Probably was mentioned before you're on the board, and then maybe a two-second mention after you're on the board, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And it's, I don't think I pursued anyone else, cause everyone thought, yeah, Alers and Cooney, that's, that's, they've made that a work with, and that's fine, so.
Yeah.
I didn't really look into another option per se.
That's okay, I don't really have any issue with, you know, that law firm, they, I know they've done lots of things for the county in many years, so, now he's very thorough and.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess, if that's what we're doing, then, um. That's what I did for research, I guess, and, um, if we wanted to send, uh. Counties, other ordinance of the draft, I mean, we could, but maybe let's see if they have a template they like to use or something first, and.
Okay.
And if they ask us if we have something, then we can come back and just talk about it quickly, um.
So, it's easy to follow, I can't remember now, right off the top of my head, which one was so easy to follow, but I could probably figure it out, but it's just very easy to follow.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there's a couple of them.
Green County snaps to the top, but that might not be right, so.
Green was definitely one we mentioned, but I don't remember those, yeah, I've gone through them too many times, mostly.
Yeah.
So, I guess if we don't have any more discussion, I'd make a motion to appoint Alers and Cooney and um send it to Maria Brownell.
Okay.
Okay.
They have a motion by Stecker to appoint Ailers and Cooney to work with us on the solar ordinance and send it to Maria Brownell.
Yeah, and then you and Tammy can communicate with her and um bring stuff back to us.
Somebody second again.
No, nope, we need a second.
I, I didn't know if you said that, yeah.
Okay, Josh will second.
Is there a timeframe? Do we want to give them a timeframe? Because is there a?
I would, I would probably inform them of the timeframe for a moratorium, but yeah, that's a good point.
Hopefully, we can get it done in that nine month time. Worst case scenario.
Or we extend it.
We, we can extend the moratorium, but it would be ideal to get it done in that time.
What nine month time are you talking about?
Ends in June, the moratorium.
Moratorium was nine months from the start.
Oh, so you're, okay, I misunderstood what you meant, the nine month is almost over.
Right, right. Okay. I mean, we need a few more notes there.
Yeah, I know, right?
Got down a couple more trees, so you're right.
Alright, we've got a motion and a second to appoint Ailers and Cooney and send it to them. Any further discussion on that?
Couple questions.
Sure.
Not, not trying to pick a fight at all, at all, it's just a question. Uh, as far as hiring an attorney to do it at all, I mean, I didn't hear any, but I, I, again, I just, we didn't hire an attorney to look at an animal ordinance outside of the county attorney. What was the determining factor here?
Todd, Todd previous has said.
Okay, that's fine, that's a good answer. And then when you talk about the specific individual of the firm, is it, is it possible if you get ninety percent of the way through this and that person leaves the firm, or? So are you, are you, are you naming the individual or are you naming the firm?
We're naming the firm and then we're send, directing us to communicate with that individual.
Yeah.
Should that individual change, we still have the firm?
Yeah, it's often changes we could obviously address at that point in time, but I would, I would not expect anything of that nature. So I have.
Okay.
I don't have my crystal ball off today either, though.
You left that a phone?
Forgot it.
Okay, well, if there's no further discussion of questions, then uh we'll go to vote here and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Alright. Discussion with the county auditor.
Okay, so, let's see. I guess he already talked about Thursday, attending the public informational meeting with Iowa Utilities Commission and Battery Storage System Facility in Sioux County and Lakota, the community room.
Okay.
Next week, so far, we just have our regular agenda stuff, there's no other requests so far, so. That's pretty light, maybe next week.
That's alright.
Yeah, and um, that's all I have.
Okay, Howard, do you have anything?
I went along with Kyle to the Central Iowa Jubilee Detention Center, okay, meeting, I, I don't want to steal the slumber, I went along because I listed it as the ultimate to see, to get a map to them, I guess. That's all I, that's all I have.
I did not have any additional meetings, but I have no question yet. Are we scheduled for our audit yet? Do we know when they're coming? I have a couple of things I want to ask them, so I don't wanna miss them.
Yes, no, we are not scheduled yet. We are working on an issue with inventory with solutions. Um, solutions is quite a problem to work with. We've been working on it for a while. Um, Elizabeth says other counties are having issues also. Um, we have sent her the reports that she has requested for the other information, so she has all of that information. We just are waiting to finalize this um inventory, so that is the only holdup. Um, and I'm talking to her on a fairly regular basis, so hopefully, I was hoping yesterday we would have that done, but.
I need, I need some definitions there. I don't know what solutions is, I don't know what inventory is, and I don't know who her is.
So, solutions is the programming that we use, that county uses for their um pretty much everything that we do in the courthouse uses solutions, so it's our software programming.
Okay.
Elizabeth is um who does our audits from Gardner and Company, and that's who her is. And what was your other question, sorry?
Inventory, inventory.
Capital assets.
Okay, so, so I don't, I don't wanna, I guess, so we're not having the audit because we're not ready, or we're not having the audit because they're not ready?
It's not that we're not having the audit, it's we, it's, we have, it's not scheduled yet because, yes, we're waiting for um a programming issue from solutions to get settled before she will schedule the audit. But the other information that she's requested, the other reports have been sent to her.
So, is it, is it, is it solutions we're waiting for, or?
Correct.
And they have no, Gardner has no tie to solutions whatsoever?
Correct.
And do lots of other counties use the solutions and have the same problem?
Correct, yes. It is an issue.
And how is it different from a year ago or whatever?
Solutions was bought out by another company, Harris, a couple of years ago, and after they were bought out, they lost a lot of employees. And so they have had a hard time getting help and getting that help trained to answer the questions that we have. Plus, that some of the help that did stay was ill for a while, um, and so some of those programmers that did transfer were out of the office for a, a long period of time, so um, yeah.
So when, 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 this is audit of twenty-three, twenty-four?
Correct.
And when is it, is there somebody telling us when we have to have it done by?
Yeah, we asked for an extension to June thirtieth, which was approved a month or so ago, but.
So then typically, June thirtieth to twenty-five, typically when would the, when we normally do it to the twenty-five audit?
Next, yes, next year.
So it's typically a six month delay, type of thing, okay, thanks.
What is the problem with the capital assets and, and solutions?
There's a bunch of different ones. At first it was depreciation wasn't calculating. And um then it was the balances from one year to the next weren't transferring. So, um, and now the hang up right now, they're still trying to find what the issue is. It's not transferring from one year to the next for some reason. So, but they're not finding which ones aren't. They know the amount, they're just not finding where it is, so.
That's not good. Hopefully, they get that fixed before next year, because I know that affects a lot of things.
We had an issue with it last year too, um, and apparently according to Elizabeth, so it, it does other counties, it's a software issue, I guess, but I hope so too.
Is there an alternative?
The alternative is not any better than, than, than what we have right now, although I have heard that a company called RenewGov, um, which was started by employees that left solutions after they were bought out, is um working on a software programming.
Software with state, because I know the state talked about working.
That one is not, but I have heard that there is a, a potential for the state to be working on a software also.
Isn't that because of this change and it not being a positive change that we can do?
Yes, correct, yes. Correct, yes.
Yeah.
So I have heard that, that also, so I am always in favor of statewide. I, I like the idea of all counties being similar in some of their software, because then um it's easy to, to ask questions and everybody's on the same page, because right now, when we all use different software, it's, it's not the same.
Yeah.
So, um, I, I do like that a little bit, um, so we'll see what happens. I expect there to be big changes, but that always means dollars, so.
And it'll take a while.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not gonna happen in a while. It's gonna probably be a couple of years down the road, I mean, that's not a simple task, so.
Yeah, no, and we've had a lot of issues with a lot of different things. It's not just inventory. In the last year, we've had a lot of different issues. All departments have struggled with solutions and that's why I think it was last year that the board agreed to hire RenewGov to help with the issues we were having with this software.
Did they help you with the TIF? Because I know that was a big undertaking, the DEP COWT always helped us so much at solutions. Did they help you with that, the Renew.gov, or how did you accomplish that?
I'm trying to remember. I don't think we had a lot of issues with, with the TIF that I remember. I think it went pretty smoothly, but I, I can't remember. They very well could have.
Anything else, I, okay.
So, um, yeah, I had the C I J D C meeting, as Howard said, he went along, that was on Friday, March twenty-eighth at ten. Um, one piece of really good news, we had had um a situation where two of our employees were um they were involved, but there was a, a claim of child abuse from one of the individuals that was there. And when he got to, when they got to another center, I don't know gender, so I messed up on that, but when they got to another center, they had made claims and when HHS did their investigation, two of our employees came back with founded child abuse claims, which was, was um not very easily um agreed to by anyone in our organization. But there is an appeal process for that and um the hearing for that was here towards the middle of March, I believe, and just before the hearing, there was an agreement that basically reversed that decision. Um, so now that situation is behind us to some degree, but both of those individuals at our um facility no longer have that hanging over their head, and one of them was a previous administrator who had been with the team in the ballpark of twenty years. Um, he actually came to the meeting, so it was nice to see him. We talked for a bit in the beginning of our meeting and then he, he had to go back to work, but he's at the DOT now. Um, so, bit of good news there. It took a long time to get to a resolution, but it was at least a positive one. Um, then we went through all our normal reports, financials, all that stuff, it was good. We are also dealing with audit stuff there. We had entrance exam, or entrance conference for the twenty-three, twenty, or twenty-two, twenty-three audit, that was a day apart from the, no, yeah. Twenty-three audit, we had the exit conference for on, I think Tuesday or Wednesday, and the following, following day, we had the entrance conference for the next year's audit, because twenty-three is so far behind them, do a single audit for a couple of things, and it was kind of a mess, but hopefully, we're gonna try and get a little bit more back on track timeline wise with our audit there, and that's with the state auditor's office, so it's not that seems to be a, an issue we're experiencing in other places too. But hopefully, that will be a little more on track going forward. Um interesting tidbit for the transportation reports, someone asked how many total miles we drove for transports this last year. And it was in the ballpark of one point eight million miles.
Wow.
So, there's a couple sets of tires going through on that stuff. We did have a brief update on the lawsuit with Hardin County. They are scheduling depositions with our director, Tony Reed, coming up. That's the only thing we had in regards to a real update there. We just got done with licensing for the detention center, that all went well. And we also had a civil rights complaint come in for, from an individual or two, potentially, that applied for a position and we didn't, in a sort of transportation, and those positions are filled by geographical area. We didn't have one available in that area, and they think they're being discriminated against because of whatever pieces of that phone call, so we're dealing with that as well too. Um, and we did talk about medical bills and how they were being paid by the county, and I guess um, I'm sure we'll have some more talk there, but the policy that was referenced did get sent out after the meeting. And it was minutes from nineteen ninety-eight that were highlighted and one line of that policy was highlighted, so I guess we will probably have future conversations about that, because some counties are getting hit pretty hard by medical bills. Any big things you think I missed there?
I'm not gonna, no, you far more thorough than I would.
So, yeah, we had a lot of good conversation. It was, I don't know, two hour meeting, hour and a half, so. That's, I think what I have, and I think everything else that we talked about for the meeting coming up on Thursday, I, I will plan to make it there, no guarantees, but I'm sure, so.
Okay.
That's what I got.
Alright, Josh.
I have a meeting.
Okay.
And I, I, I don't think I'll be able to make it Thursday. Oh, to the, very busy, busy season, so.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, all planned. I had no meetings. I missed my Care Connections meeting last Tuesday due to our tax levy here at the same time, so. Otherwise, no meetings and, and yeah, I'll plan to go on Thursday.
I mentioned I'll plan to go, but that's my day I go to Emesfer.
Sure.
And so depending on how many people are there, if I.
That's fine.
It's kind of a time thing, if I get back in time or I might be late.
As long as one or two or, or however many of us are there, at least somebody can have a report or something.
And if you get there, if you're not slated, you're gonna, probably not gonna miss too much.
Yeah, I mean, I'm planning on it, so.
See how many public come, so. Okay, well, anything else to discuss before we adjourn? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn, motion by Stecker.
Second.
Second by Whacter. Uh, a discussion on adjourning. If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous, and we are adjourned at nine forty-eight. Thank you.